Okay, we are reconvened from our closed session and we need to certify that session, please.
May I make a motion that we certify our closed session and we only talk about in closed session the two items that we went in to talk about, which was disposition of publicly held real property and consultation with legal counsel.
Okay.
Second.
All right, we have a motion made and second, we certify our closed session. Ms. Wiggins, please.
Councilman Freeman.
Aye.
Councilman Krieger.
Aye.
Councilman Southall.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Hunt.
Aye.
Councilwoman Crawford.
Aye.
And Mayor Hesel.
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carried by a vote of six to zero.
Thank you, Judy. We've already called our meeting to order earlier. We're delighted tonight to have Cub Scout PAC 28 flaming arrow patrols, is that right? And we're going to ask them if they would come up and join us. We'll have our invocation and then these young men are going to lead us in our pledge of allegiance. So you guys just come right up here or you can come, you come right up here because that way they can see you on TV.
It'll work best right there.
Okay, wherever you think. That's fine. It's a lot of know when they're, when they, when you see them, Bob. Pretty good.
That's perfect. You got it, Mr. Mayor.
Be up there, man, you guys are right. Okay, would you please stand? We'll have our invocation and Cub Scout PAC 28 will lead us in our pledge of allegiance. Heavenly Father, we are indeed grateful for the day and for the many blessings that you have bestowed upon us today. We ask that you would be present in these chambers this night as we consider the issues of our city. We pray for just a portion of your wisdom, Heavenly Father, that all that we say and do here tonight will be in the best interest of those that we serve. And we make our prayer in your son's name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God and indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Keep them there as long as you, as you want to. It's all right, let's get finished. That's okay. We appreciate it. We have two presentations tonight before we get into the meat of our agenda. And the first presentation tonight is, it's going to be my pleasure on behalf of council to present to the Carr family some tokens of appreciation, a resolution honoring their loved one who is, who is now deceased. And I'm going to ask that family if they would join me at the podium at this time. Jimmy? Robert, did, did you want to? Tonight, we are honored to have with us the Carr family, being the family of Bunky Carr. This is what we all knowed, knew Claude as, as Bunky. I remember well when Bunky came into the fire department as an apprentice. And that wasn't just yesterday, was it? Bunky then worked for the, for the city of Pecosin for some 32 years. He became a victim of cancer not too long ago and fought a good fight. His family fought a good fight and a cure just wasn't to be and, and Bunky passed away on May the 29th, 2010. Let me just say on behalf of council, Charlene, and the citizens of this city, we are grateful for his service to this city. We are grateful to have had the opportunity to, to know Bunky, to be able to socialize with Bunky. He had a tremendously strong constitution with regard to his disease. There was never any blame of anyone. He took it in stride and, and he fought as hard as I've ever seen anybody fight to live. The unfortunate thing is that his fight failed, but, you know, Bunky is kind of on the other side of the cross tonight, if you will. He is seeing things that he longed to see. He's treading on streets that he longed to, to tread on. And we're happy for him. But there is no closure for this family. It really doesn't matter how much time goes by, that's still the hold in, in their hearts and, and Charlene, we feel it with you. Tonight, we have a resolution that I'd like to read. It's a resolution in memory of Claude J. Bunky Carr Jr. Whereas Claude J. Bunky Carr Jr., a native and lifelong resident of Pecosin, passed away on May the 29th, 2010. Whereas prior to his retirement and death, Claude J. Carr Jr. was employed for 32 years with the City of Pecosin Fire Department, elevating to the rank of lieutenant, and was a member of the Pecosin Volunteer Rescue Squad, receiving the honor of a lifetime membership. Whereas Claude J. Carr Jr. served with distinction on the Pecosin City Council from 1996 to the year 2000. Whereas Claude J. Carr Jr. was a graduate of the second ever paramedic class in Virginia and served as an EMT instructor for the fire departments throughout the area. Whereas Claude J. Carr Jr. will long be remembered for his long and dedicated service to the City of Pecosin Fire Department. Now therefore, be it resolved by the council of the City of Pecosin, Virginia. Section one, that the death of Claude J. Bunky Carr Jr. is a distinct loss to the City of Pecosin and City Council does hereby express its deepest sympathies and condolences to his family. Section two, that this resolution shall become effective immediately upon his passage and framed copy presented to the family in recognition of his dedication to service and the citizens of the City of Pecosin. And Charlene, it is my pleasure on behalf of council, indeed on behalf of each citizen, to present you with this resolution. We'd like you to have that. And then thanks to Ms. Judy and Ms. Vicki, we also want you, we'll show this, this is a, a picture of Bunky when, actually the councilmatic picture that was taken of Bunky, 1996 to 2000. We had the honor of serving with him. And this is the picture also that, that hung outside there in the hallway for, for four years. And so Charlene, we, and to his entire family, we're appreciative to you. We are appreciative to Bunky. He gave a lot of his good, good years to this city. I think Robert would probably agree. I know that, you know, if I ever needed the ambulance or needed somebody in the back of that ambulance, I was kind of hoping it would be Bunky. It's just not enough good things that we can say. You know, he always conducted himself very professionally. He was dedicated. He had class and dignity and he was honest as the day is long. And that's pretty much the whole package. So we appreciate Bunky. And we say to you now and to the family, if there's anything that we can do for you folks, even as time goes on, we're, we're here to do that.
Thank you.
Okay?
Thank you very much.
And this applause is for you and Bunky. Okay, let's move on to our audience of visitors at this time. If there's anybody in the audience that would like to, I'm sorry. Oh, forgot. Is she, is she, are they here? Is anybody from Walmart here, a representative from Walmart? We forgot the blue light, that's the problem. They don't know how to find us. Let's try it again, audience of visitors, if there's anyone in the audience who would like to address council on any issue at this time, we'd be delighted to hear from you. Mr. Green.
Mayor Hesel, council members, staff, I'm Buddy Green. I live at 12 Evans Circle. I just wanted to come tonight to publicly congratulate Tom on a hard fought and well organized campaign. And I'm sorry that he's not here, but I will have later date and tell him in person, but I publicly wanted to say that. And I'd like to thank my campaign committee for all their hard diligent work. They kept me focused and energized and, believe me, that's not an easy task. But they, they are some of the hardest working people that I've, I've ever known. And I'd also like to congratulate everyone in the City of Pecosin that voted. I think it's something we all should be proud of, that we set the record in Hampton Roads for the most people involved. Fifty-three percent of our registered voters came out to vote and I look forward to representing them and working with y'all. Thank you.
Thank you, Buddy. And we look forward to working with you too, sir. Okay, anyone else? Didn't know if that was, I didn't know if that was Wendell or Santa Claus, I didn't know which one it was.
Mr. Mayor, I'm the council. I've been unable, unable to attend the past two months. I know you've missed me because last time I was here, I gave you a challenge based on if I was one of you. I don't know what you've done with it. I know it was interesting that time you said that you all would look into it. Since I haven't heard, I'll give a little further information on this particular issue. In my research, I found out, and I believe it can't be disputed, that the Watkins property, which is the Chandler's and the Linswards and all that, have used this as an ingress egress across the Toppin property for all those years going back to 1911. So I don't need a legal opinion to tell me that they have the legal rights to go and come. So that's not the issue. The issue is what the city's blundering, I think, are having insufficient information to make decisions past that time. And the letter that they wrote on 2001 contains these errors based on the limited information. That's a letter that I said that should be read, addressed and rewrote. For instance, in 1911, one of the members of the Michelle Wallace family was 16 years old. He was a first, he was entering in the first Pecosin high school class. He graduated med v, he went on to college. And later, he recognized that the Toppin, that the land was an ingress, ingress, egress right way across his property. But it also went across the neighbor's property, who were relatives of theirs, Augusta Toppin. And he purchased this parcel of land and called it his private road. Now, it was in the deed of 1956, I believe it was, when the Toppins sold their land to Tucker, they said that Clarence Toppin had a private road across their properties. After he crossed their properties, he turned and went down the field and went to the house through the field, a different way. He, he did not drive the areas that the others did drive. Now, the, so there was more easements there than just the one. Now, when the properties were developed and the City of Pecosin ruled on them, if you go back to the subdivision approval, it says that, that they took this 20-foot easement for drainage and utilities. They didn't block the people from using it, but they said that the city had certain rights. And it's so vague, the way the drawings of all this has never been addressed. And this is one of the areas of additional information I felt like you should review and reissue this letter. And I will stay on the trail. Thank you.
Thank you, Wendell. Appreciate it. Anybody else? Okay. We have two sessions of minutes to approve. Would you take those individually, please?
Mr. Mayor, make a motion that we approve the minutes of the regular session of October 25th, 2010.
Okay. All right. Motion made second, we adopt our regular session minutes from October 25th, 2010. Any concerns, comments, corrections, additions, any questions regarding those minutes? If not, Judy, please.
Councilman Southall.
Aye.
Councilman Freeman.
Aye.
Councilwoman Crawford.
Aye.
Councilman Krieger.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Hunt.
Aye.
Mayor Hesel.
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carried by a vote of six to zero.
Thank you, ma'am. How about the work session?
I'll make a motion again, Mr. Mayor, that we approve the minutes of the work session of October 25th, 2010.
Okay. All right. Motion made second, that we adopt the work session minutes same date as well. Any concerns, comments regarding those? If not, Ms. Wiggins, please.
Vice Mayor Hunt.
Aye.
Councilman Krieger.
Aye.
Councilwoman Crawford.
Aye.
Councilman Freeman.
Aye.
Councilman Southall.
Aye.
And Mayor Hesel.
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carried by a vote of six to zero.
Okay, thank you, Judy. Let's move on to item F, new business. First item is a resolution, making an appointment to the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board. I think we made all of those appointments.
Except for one. Except for one, yes. Since then, yeah, I've talked to Charlie Gatz.
Okay.
So I'd like to make a motion that we appoint Charles Gatz to the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board from the central with a term that goes to October 31st, 2013.
Okay, thank you, Frank.
Second.
All right, we have a motion made second, that we adopt the resolution with Mr. Charlie Gatz's name inserted. Any concerns, comments regarding the resolution? None? Ms. Wiggins, please.
Councilman Freeman.
Aye.
Councilman Krieger.
Aye.
Councilman Southall.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Hunt.
Aye.
Councilwoman Crawford.
Aye.
And Mayor Hesel.
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carried by a vote of six to zero.
Okay, thank you, Judy. Move on to item two, it's a resolution accepting Hunt Landia Way into the city's transportation system. That's at the Villas, right?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, anybody prepared with a motion? I'm assuming Randy, that it's met all the requirements.
Yes, sir, it has.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion that we adopt the resolution accepting a certain street in Villas into the City of Pecosin transportation system.
Second. Okay, we have a motion made second, we adopt the resolution. Any concerns, comments?
Mr. Mayor, I'll abstain from this, but.
Okay. All right, Judy, please.
Councilwoman Crawford.
Aye.
Councilman Southall.
Aye.
Councilman Krieger.
Aye.
Councilman Freeman.
Aye.
And Mayor Hesel.
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carried by a vote of five to zero with none of the standing.
All right, Judy, thank you very much. Let's move on to item three, it's a resolution authorizing the city manager to enroll the city in the state motor fuel program. Randy?
Mr. Mayor, as part of its continuing efforts to, to do the best it can for public dollars, the state has, has come up with a new way to bulk purchase fuel across the state and has invited localities to, to be, become part of that. This is not a contract in that we're not bound to it. It is a program that we enroll in and stay in as long as it makes sense for us. Mr. Petty and Ms. Owens have looked into this and both are of the opinion that this will save us money in the short room, in the short run with a, with an opportunity for even more significant savings as more localities join the state in the, in the procurement process. Both are here. If either one of you would like to come up and say anything or if members of council have a question.
Okay, all right.
So basically, what I got out of that was it's, it's their option to opt in or opt out?
It's our option to opt in, but we only have to stay as long as we believe it's in our best interest.
Okay.
What do we believe the savings would be in like the first year of the program? Is there a, a wag?
It's about a penny a gallon right now.
Well, when you're running a fleet of buses and other things.
A little bit help.
It could be significant money.
How many gallons are we running?
Listen, Tony, let me ask you to come up here if.
The public in here.
So everybody can see you. Okay, the question was.
Well, the answer from you was that we're saving about a penny a gallon, right?
Yes.
Okay, and then I think.
Next was how many gallons?
How many gallons do we run through in a year?
Eighty, about 85,000 diesel, 35,000 gasoline.
Okay, so over 100,000?
Yes.
$10,000.
Yep.
Savings.
Thank you for finding us.
Yeah, I think it's a great opportunity for us and I think it's going to improve as the state increases this program. I think it will start it in August, so we're getting right in on the ground floor of it.
Great.
Good job. Good job, Tony. Thank you.
All right, Mr. Mayor, I have a motion that we adopt a resolution authorizing the city manager to enroll the city in the state motor fuel program.
Okay. Second. We have a motion made second that we adopt the resolution. Any other comments, questions? Ms. Wiggins, please.
Councilman Southall.
Aye.
Councilman Freeman.
Aye.
Councilman Marie, excuse me.
Councilwoman Crawford. Aye.
Councilman Krieger.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Hunt.
Aye.
Mayor Hesel.
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carried by a vote of six to zero.
Thank you, Judy. Okay, let's move on to item four, it's a resolution directing, directing that public notice be given of council's intention to receive bids for perpetual easement on publicly owned property. Randy, comments?
Mr. Mayor, the city has received a request for perpetual easement from American Tower Incorporated for parcel 19-01-00-0210 located at the city's Public Works Garage. If you, by approving this, this evening, you will set in motion an advertisement process. We'll be advertising for two consecutive weeks and then at your meeting on the 22nd, we will be in a position to open any bids that we receive. And then if, if the city council so chooses, move forward to public hearing and consideration of adoption to, to grant that ordinance if you, if you deem it appropriate.
Okay. Any questions to the manager?
Just for clarification for the public, this is the tower that's directly behind the Pecosin Primary School.
It's the same one that's within the Public Works compound? Yes, ma'am.
Yes, thanks.
Okay. Any other comments, questions? Somebody prepared with a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion that we adopt a resolution of the council of the City of Pecosin directing that public notice be given for our council's intention to receive bids for perpetual easement on city property.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
All right, we have a motion made second that we adopt the resolution. Any concerns, comments? Okay, Ms. Wiggins, please.
Vice Mayor Hunt.
Aye.
Councilman Krieger.
Aye.
Councilwoman Crawford.
Aye.
Councilman Freeman.
Aye.
Councilman Southall.
Aye.
And Mayor Hesel.
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carried by a vote of six to zero.
Thank you. Judy, let's move on to council comments for the city manager.
Randy? Only, only a few items this evening, sir. One is just to alert the public that city offices will be closed this coming Thursday and observance of Veterans Day. And as we look further into the month, on Thursday and Friday of Thanksgiving week, city offices will also be closed. We've received a request, an invitation to school board to join them in joint meetings similar to what you did last year. The school board has suggested the evenings of December the 2nd or December the 1st, with December the 2nd being their stronger preference because all school board members are available. If, if the council so desires, we can choose one of those two nights. We'll come up with an additional night, I think, in speaking with the superintendent. Since we met at the middle school last year and, and most council members most likely would have been most recently to the elementary school, that we would choose either the primary school or the high school for the, for the venue. I'm looking for some feedback from the council on that.
For the venue, it doesn't make any difference to me.
The chairs are bigger in the high school.
Yes. That's true.
Whichever school they'd like to tour us through, I'm sure they have some needs they'd like to, to show us. The second, is that a?
It's a Thursday, sir.
It's a Thursday. Either date is fine.
Yeah, I'm all right.
Mr. Council, any concerns with the Thursday?
The tree lighting is up here on the first for the Kiwanis Christmas tree lighting. That's the only thing at 6:30, but.
If we do December 2nd.
Is it 6:30?
6:30 on the first.
No, I mean.
That's when the Kiwanis tree lighting out front.
It's at 6:30?
Yes. Well, that's what I have. I could be wrong.
Oh, it's 4:00.
Is it 4? Good. All right. Oh, I just had tree lighting.
That's at 6.
It might be the memory tree.
Okay, okay. But the second is when they, they can have everybody on board, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay. I'm all right with the second.
Okay, we'll move forward with the second. Thank you very much. Two additional items. One is, you'll note on the draft work session schedule moving forward, that we attentively plan for your next meeting to give you a preliminary rundown of revenues and expenditures and to discuss the 2012 budget. Without objection, I'd like to move that to the first meeting in January. Two principal reasons, one of which is by then I hope we'll have much more specificity with the reassessment because that really is going to be one of our two biggest issues, I think, that we'll be dealing with in the upcoming budget. And the other will be to afford us the opportunity to get the governor's proposed budget, which will likely have some impacts on us and may have significant impacts on the schools. So for those two reasons, without objection, I'd like to do that until next time. That would allow us to have a work session free evening, what could be your short meeting on, on the 22nd of this month, without objection. Lastly, an idea, and I'm looking for feedback from the council, the number of staff members and community members and then council members have talked, so mulled over the idea of taking advantage of the recently cleared easement across Victory Boulevard and using a portion of that easement way in the City of Pecosin to put down some of the mulch that is being produced or will be en masse further up the street. We could take advantage of essentially free mulch and create a mulched trail along that easement way. Our cost would be the cost of spreading the mulch once, once dropped off and likely some fabric to keep it from growing up with, with weeds and things. But this is, it would be a significant endeavor, so I'm looking for input. If, if any member of the council is concerned about that, I'd like to know that we.
I've already given you my input and I, and I think that we have an opportunity to provide an area for citizens to, to run, to walk. That's pretty far a piece from Smith Store to the city line coming down With Creek Road. The little cost we'd have in it, you know, would certainly be, I think, you know, worth putting out to have, it's a safe area. It's a safe area for folks to go. I wish we would ask, ask York County if they'd be interested in extending it.
Now, I heard, I heard, Mr. Mayor, that York County is going to put in a.
Bicycle path.
Sidewalk in their part of the area. And I, that's a rumor that I heard from somebody on the.
Well, maybe, maybe true.
Sidewalk Committee. And I don't know whether, you know, that'd be a better place to put the first bike path sidewalk. I don't know. I mean.
Probably, Randy explored.
City manager talks to.
And see what, but, but I think your original question, I'm, I'm, I'm very supportive of that.
I'm for something.
I think it's a great idea.
Being that we're giving them a place to put their mulch for free, they wouldn't agree to spread it?
I think they would drop it where we wanted it in, in quantities that were easily spread by us. If I could respond to.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Krieger's question. I have talked to the county administrator in York County, I think it was either late Thursday or, or Friday. They do have an interest in a paved trail.
Right.
They don't have any money associated with it that I know of at this point and are looking for grants. And he asked me in fact, did I have any leads on that? And, you know, we've been looking at that, so I passed some information on, but they're, they're, they're looking at that too.
Thank you.
Great. So I'm assuming that we're, we're at least moving forward on the mulch?
Absolutely.
Okay?
From my perspective, yes.
Thank you. That's all I have, sir.
Mr. Freeman.
Yes, sir, I do. I just want to tell everybody I certainly appreciate the vote and I had also heard some some comments about the fact that the Eastern District was a very clean campaign from various citizens, so, appreciate it.
Okay, great. Okay, thanks, here.
A couple of things, Mr. Mayor.
Sure.
Earlier today, I talked to the city manager, and I asked a question about can a managing company of a trailer park dictate, um, that all the residents will have a large tote? I'm referring to Shady Oaks, and we have a lot of seniors down there, and they are, they have to pay for a big tote, and a lot of them probably don't fill it up one-third, so, um, I don't know if it's a question for the city attorney, or the city manager, or both of them, or whatever, but, um, it's something that I've been asked a question.
Sure.
So, you know, if I can get, you know, something back in a couple of day, weeks, a couple of months, whatever.
We will run it down, Mr. Creaker, absolutely.
Thank you, sir. Uh, the second thing was, uh, congratulations to Steve Clark. We spoke here last week, he talked about, uh, taking the billing and whatever for the, uh, real estate property and personal property tax out of North Carolina and putting it in Virginia, and that's something that I think a lot of us felt that should be, should have been in Virginia for a long time, so I appreciate him doing what he did for that. Even though it's Lynchburg, it's still Virginia.
Yeah, that's right.
Yeah, and the last thing, sir, is, um, the city manager a couple weeks ago, when his manager's report, mentioned about a youth football team out of Pecosin, uh, I think they were a nine, ten-year-old, the, the Pecosin Bulls?
Yeah.
That they saw in October where, um, the National Football League Players Association decided that they were going to wear pink, um, in honor of, uh...
Breast cancer.
Breast cancer, wearing this one, and they decided on their own, these kids, they're nine and ten, that they would wear some form of pink to one of their games. I mean, and I think it's great, and I think that, you know, we have future leaders in this nine, ten-year group, and that, you know, you know, they could be taking our jobs in a few years.
Yeah.
So, congratulations to all the boys on, uh, on the Bulls.
Absolutely.
Those little boys made the NFL.com.
That's right, yeah.
They sure did.
That's it, sir.
Okay, thanks, right. Mr. Southall?
Yes, sir, I've got a couple of things I'd like to say. First, I'd like also to thank the citizens of Pecosin for voting for me. I'm glad that Mickey Mouse or Donald Duck did not win. If I had lost, I would have desperately deserved it. I would also like to thank the Cub Scout Post Twenty-Eight for coming out tonight and leading us in the pledge of allegiance, uh, that was a really nice thing for them to do. And I'm also glad to see we're going to have the meeting with the Pecosin School Board on the second. I just learned this past week that we don't have, uh, the Ballard Corrigan Salutaryan anymore, and I'm interested in finding out how that ever stopped, I was curious about that. I hate to see those kind of academic goals go away. And, uh, as you know, I talked with Randy a little while this afternoon, and he's going to, uh, look into verifying the accuracy of the new digital FEMA maps to compare their accuracy, especially in the areas where they've had some significant change, so the city knows from the city's perspective on what these changes really are. And I'd also like to encourage the citizens of Pecosin to be involved with the city and to, uh, apply for the various boards that we have in the city. Citizen involvement on the various boards that we have is important to get the best kind of results, and so, um, I'd like to see the citizens more involved.
All right, sir, thank you. Thanks, sir.
I'd like to, uh, copy what he said about getting citizens involved, because we do have a really great community and a lot of people are involved. I wanted to congratulate Mr. Green on, on winning the election and running a very clean campaign, and, um, I'm sure Tom would have thanked you for your kind words, but he, he's on a cruise tonight, so I think he's probably happy where he is. I did want to mention, too, about the, um, we had the meet the candidates night, and after it, after they taped it, which I was not able to make it to, and then there were supposed to be two times when it was going to play, and the first time I couldn't watch it, or I watched half of it, and then the second time I wasn't able to get to it. But we ran the meet the candidates night repeatedly over, you know, between the weekend just before the election, which I thought was a really great idea, and in that spirit, I would like to request our city manager to put on the next agenda, um, to have us discuss airing work sessions as well. I think it's something we've talked about in the past, and, um, I'd like to see that on a, on an agenda in a proper meeting.
Hello? That it? Okay. What did you want to say, sir?
I'd like one comment about that, you know, that was one of the questions asked in our, uh, meeting with the citizens on the meet the candidates night, and, and anyone who listened to that found that I took a neutral point of view on that, because to me, it's up to what the citizens want. We had a work session tonight, and there, there weren't a lot of people there, by Mr., Dana Dickens relative to the vision of Hampton Roads, and we had his perspective on it, and we got a little insight on the city's perspective on that, and I think the citizens would have found that information interesting.
All right, well, it'll be there. Jean?
Just a couple of things, Mr. Mayor. The, um, the one, one thing I would mention here is that, uh, Randy, you didn't talk about the FEMA letter that came out, it's about two hundred homes affected.
Yes, sir.
I'm not sure that everybody's received that mailing yet. You may want to, uh, take a couple of seconds here just to talk about what the citizens' options are, if you could.
Sure. Recently, we mailed to a little more than two hundred property owners a notice alerting them affirmatively of a process that is being undertaken by FEMA. FEMA has recently issued a series of changes to the draft FIRM map. FIRM maps are the flood maps that are associated with flood insurance in the city and elevation. The federal process provides a ninety-day opportunity for homeowners that wish to, to provide an appeal or to file an appeal on their specific property. We have on our website, which some people are, find that easy to see, but, um, others do not, uh, we have hard copies here, and we can be glad to walk through with citizens, um, what their property is cer- certainly currently showing as far as a FIRM map, and what the new FIRM map shows for the same property. We can do it online or, or in person. If you, if you're coming in person, call ahead if you can, but if not, just please come to the community development counter, and we will help you as quickly as we can. The process for appeal, uh, the homeowner needs, or property owner, needs to put forward some type of scientific evidence, uh, the one that comes most frequently to mind is an update, is a current relevant, uh, elevation certificate. If they have that, uh, they might want to be very careful in checking to make sure that it's properly reflected. That's probably the main way that I recall, uh, the elevation certificate. Um, we've been asked to act as a conduit for citizens that have an interest in filing appeal, and in the same letter, we asked, uh, citizens to let us know by the end of November if they were planning to, what the actual end date for the appeal itself, I think it's the second of February if I'm remembering that correctly, so there is a, there is a, a time, it's very important for the people to let us know, uh, we're, if we've got enough people that are interested, I got a suggestion earlier today from Mr. Green, that we may be able to use our collective buying power as the city on behalf of the citizens to negotiate a better deal for them for these elevation certificates, so we're going to be looking at that. So, if you will let us know, if you're interested, that helps us, then be in position to continue to provide information. Debbie, did I miss anything important? Did you come forward? Can you come forward?
Now, you actually did a very good job, thank you. The only thing I'd like to stress is the November thirtieth deadline. If anyone would like to appeal the decision of the maps, they need to contact us. It has to be done by November thirtieth because the appeals have to be ran through the city. We have to collect those appeals and submit one request to FEMA by the February second date, so that's real important to get that word out. That's it.
Agreed, and I, and I thank you, Randy, for, for following up on that. I guess try to take it right back down to where the rubber hits the road. A lot, a lot of homes on Back River, uh, affected by that. Obviously, that's not all the homes, but it's a, it's a big financial burden, uh, potential out there for you if you own a home in that region, so it is, I encourage you to, to read that letter that you'll get from the city. I think all the affected homeowners will receive a letter.
Did send them.
And it's very important that you pay attention to that and that, uh, if you've got some documentation on your elevation, on your particular elevation and property, that, uh, you come forward with that. So, um, I just didn't want to gloss over that because I, I know that our time is short on the, on the November thirtieth, uh, deadline for, uh, as most people are aware, we asked for an extension on that and were denied that by FEMA.
And you look, Jean, some of the houses are like on Hopkins Court and Oxford Mews, and they aren't really waterfront property unless we get a bad storm.
Correct.
So, I mean, it affects a lot more than just like Lakeview and, you know, places like that.
The second thing on my agenda, Mr. Mayor, tonight, is, um, dealing with sidewalk issue. Where I don't want, you know, I'm looking for kind of a unified position on sidewalks and, and I'm starting to feel like, uh, there's a petition out there, um, against, and there's also a sidewalk committee for, I don't want to lose momentum by not bringing everybody back into the room together, so I would ask that we, um, bring the property owners, especially those that have signed the petition, uh, back before us to hear what their concerns really are, um, that we kind of take the listening type of atti- attitude of, of listening to what, uh, would make the project to go, or if there's nothing that would make the project to go, willing to listen to that also. But what makes it a win-win? Obviously, there's some people concerned about their personal properties, and that is a, a key ingredient, is that I don't know of any Pecosin city council that's ever taken property from somebody, so I don't think that this would be the first one to start. So is there a neutral ground that we, or a common ground that we can reach, um, before the whole project fails due to some, some pull in both directions? So I'd ask that we pull those people together in January. I think, uh, it's basically a waste of time as we approach the Christmas season, and everybody's getting busier and busier as we approach that season to talk about that, but a fresh perspective at the beginning of the new year to, because, uh, there's nothing out there that changes between now and that time. Again, that's not a negative connotation to sidewalks, it's not a positive one. It's basically, uh, can we save this thing before we get into some infighting that, uh, politically we can't handle as, as a council? So I'd ask that we do that, and that's all I've got, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, and, and just, just to follow up what you said, Jean, I, I, I think those, those folks are, those folks that are affected are the ones that need to be heard from. We went through this process some years ago, uh, on With Creek, uh, excuse me, on Little Florida Road, um, and we sat down with those folks as well, and, uh, I, I just think, you know, anytime you can involve the, the public, um, especially those that are directly affected by a project, we certainly ought to them to do that, so, um, you know, like we'll sometime in January, we'd like to have those property owners, you know, just meet some informal, um, some informal way and, and just, as Jean said, be a listening, have a listening ear and, and, um, you know, see exactly what's, you know, what's on their minds.
If that's what the council would like, uh, my suggestion is to do it as a special meeting, rather than to try to fit it into...
Sure.
It, it could take ten minutes and it could take three hours, and I don't think we should let the agenda shape the discussion.
Let's do it off, off of an agenda night.
And perhaps at the community center, at a different...
Whatever's, whatever's good.
Why don't I, why don't I come up with some, uh, some suggested dates? We'll look, um, the, off the top of my head, I was thinking, just since you typically clear Mondays, because you need to have them cleared to be a council member, perhaps the intervening Monday between the first and, and, um, second, that's the meeting in January?
Yeah, that's a ways out, but, but let's start with that, and then we'll see what happens.
I'd like to say, I, I don't know that moving it away from here would be a great idea because I think many people in Pecosin would be interested in hearing it, so I think televising this one in particular would be one that I would like to have televised.
I want to meet with the property owners. That's all, all my venue is, is to hear from the property owners in a non-combative environment.
Well, not just the property owners that have signed the petition, but everybody up and down that road, plus Hudgens Road as well.
They should all be invited.
Yeah.
Hear from them all.
Right.
And see if we can work to a negotiation point and, right?
But I'd like to see it here so that the public can also hear from them, because it, this does affect our entire city. Sidewalks do. We don't have the sidewalks on Little Florida, because, I don't know why.
Well, the reason we don't have them is safety.
All right, I, I've made my, that's my direction.
Mr. Mayor, I need some direction on...
The direction is, well, you know, I, I don't think it, Jean and I, my, my, I, I'm agree with Jean, I want to meet with the property owners, I don't want to meet with the entire city. We're, we're going to have a time to do that, and, and, and I'm all for that, but these are the folks that are affected by sidewalks, especially the way that they want to be put in. They're, they're, they're affected, and that's the people that I think we need to hear from at least first. You know, if I'm not affected by the sidewalk, I'm not real sure that, I mean, how does somebody come and speak for someone who's affected by the sidewalk to tell, tell somebody what a great thing it is?
We've kind of got to remember that even the sidewalk committee hasn't presented something in a public forum, so we're dealing from a, a lack of information. Where I, where I would rather save some positive, uh, traction on sidewalks is to try and not have a churn situation. I think we can get some negotiation points. I think what we're going to hear is, 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 uh, some positive things. If you do this, then I don't mind, you know, but obviously, the information that they've gotten is not correct, so, well, why don't we just take it, the two separate things? Obviously, what I heard was, we'll have another discussion about whether, um, public work sessions are, are on there or not. We've had that about three times now, uh, you know, I don't know what, what we're doing there, but that aside, we'll handle that, and then we'll decide what to do, but in January, either way, we've got to pull the landowners in.
Yes, sir.
Can I ask a question? Sure. Right now, I'm uncertain whether we're just interested in hearing from the people who signed the petition, who aren't in favor of it, or the people along the entire route.
We're talking about the entire route.
Anybody along the entire route, okay, and, and then after we're ready to formulate some opinions, and we, but, but at some point, we will have a public forum where everybody's involved.
Sure, well, all of them will be public, right?
Right. Oh, well, sure, all of them be public.
There's a, there's, there is a really long trail, uh, you know, we've got thousands of dollars to spend on engineering costs to find out, you know, what the right of ways really are, you know, is there property that may have to be taken? Is there property that, uh, we may be able to purchase? Those, I think those kinds of questions, we don't, we don't have the answers to any of those. When Randy and I talked about it today just a little bit, uh, you know, even going to those folks that, that are affected along the route, we're not going to have a lot of information to give them, because we just don't know, and I don't think we're going to know in January. We might, but I don't think we're going to know, and their questions, you know, their questions are going to be, well, why can't you put it in with curb and gutter? And we're not going to be able to answer why we can't do that, because we don't know whether we can or whether we can't. You know, they may, they, as Jean has mentioned, they may say, if you can do it with curb and gutter, we're all for it, because it takes care of the ditch, ditch gets piped, the sidewalk's over top of it, and, you know, I'm good.
I don't, I don't want to go on and on about sidewalks, because obviously, I had one time had requested the sidewalk committee be stood up. We heard about this in October. You can imagine how fast the landowners are thinking, what's going on, and I think it's strictly a lack of information.
Agreed.
So, all, all I'm going to do is get them in a room and make sure that we, we got it straightened, that we got the, all the information out there before them.
And will the sidewalk committee be at that meeting?
Sure.
Okay.
And we should all be listening, not selling.
Okay, anything else? Anybody?
Uh, just one thing, and Mr. Green left, but nobody on council congratulated Mr. Green on his, on his victory.
I congratulated him when I saw him this evening, when I saw him.
Publicly.
Mr. Southall did.
And I have two years of, of golf sto- golf stories about Mr. Green to relate to council when he comes back on in January.
And we'll make a motion to skip that part?
No. That's going to be the best part of the meeting, Carrie.
You can, you can make a motion to adjourn. Slow move, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
Motion made, secondly adjourned.